Thank you, sir. It wasn't this that we did that. Don't have it anymore. Hold on.
Hey, Chris. It's when you, when you're, when you're unmuting yourself, Chris, that's what's causing that echo.
I'm perfect. I got you. Thank you, sir.
Yep.
So everyone can still hear me because we have the regular microphone here.
Yeah, that main mic is on.
Perfect. So I'll stay muted. Yes, sir.
We're ready?
Yes, sir.
Okay, Steph, I'm ready. Okay, we'll go ahead and call the October Planning Commission meeting holder and roll call. Commissioner member Dennis, I don't think is going to be here tonight. Online. Commissioner member Hein.
Here.
Here. Commissioner member Lucas is online.
Yes.
Okay. Commissioner member Whitmore is here and I am here. Important notices, this meeting is being held by electronic means pursuant of the continuity of government ordinance is adopted by the Board of Supervisors on September 28th, 2020 due to the threats posed by COVID-19 pandemic to the health, safety, and welfare of the public, and in accordance with the recommendations, guidelines, and requirements of federal, state, and local authorities. Some commission members will be participating remotely. Staff will be presenting as normal in the Board of Supervisors meeting room at 150 South Main Street, Lexington. And while the room will be open to the public due to the size of the meeting room and social distancing requirements, no more than 30 attendees will be allowed in the room at one time. For the Governor of the Commonwealth, Virginia Executive Order 63, all persons over the age of 10 that do not have a precluding medical condition are asked aware of a face covering. We will hold citizen comment near the beginning of a meeting. We will do our best to take citizen comment remotely. There are two options for citizens to offer comment remotely. One, join the Rockbridge County Planning Commission Zoom webinar. That link is available on the county website to copy into the address line in your browser. Or two, you could join by telephone. Dial into one of the following numbers, and these are listed also in the county website. The numbers are 1, 3, 0, 1, 7, 1, 5, 8, 5, 9, 2, 4, 1, 3, 1, 2, 6, 2, 6, 6, 7, 9, 9. Or thirdly, 1, 6, 6, 9, 9, 0, 0, 6, 8, 3, 3. Webinar ID is 8, 8, 4, 3, 3, 2, 1, 9, 6, 7, 1. Password number is 4, 9, 9, 2, 9, 4. Citizens wishing to comply, I, citizens wishing to simply view the meeting live or after the fact, can do so on the Rockbridge County Planning Commission YouTube channel, which is available on the county website. And so at this time, we will proceed with the meeting. I will start first with citizen comments on anything that is not on tonight's agenda. I'll remind everyone that in addition to participating by Zoom or telephone, written citizen comments have been solicited for receipt on way of email, US mail, and the drop box located at the front entrance to the county administration building and by way of email. We will take comments in the following order. The names and magisterial district of citizens that have submitted comments receiving, received by way of email, letter, or drop box will be read aloud and made part of the minutes of this meeting. The planning commission members have received all comments that have, that have been submitted. For in-person participants, if there are any, moderator will ask if there are any particular participants present to comment, and if there are, they will be invited to approach podium and address the commission. For Zoom participants, participants who do not have a microphone on their computer can click on the Q and A button and submit their comment by way of typing. And the moderator will read the comment aloud during the public comment. When typing a comment, please begin with your name and magisterial district. B, participants with a microphone on their computer can re, can click on the raise hand button, and the moderator will unmute participants one at a time to receive verbal comment. For phone participants, citizens participating by phone will also be allowed to speak. The moderator and commission can only see your phone number on your screen. If you would like to make a citizen comment by way of phone line, please push the star 9 now. And by pressing star 9, the moderator will see that you have raised your hand, and will go down the list of numbers and unmute each line one at a time. Prior to unmuting a line, the moderator will announce the last three numbers of your phone number. Will then hear a recording indicate your phone is now unmuted, and at that point, you can indicate whether or not you do wish to comment. If stated yes, you'll be asked to state your name and magisterial district for the record. In any case, citizen comments will follow the same rules as normal. Please state your name and magisterial district, and please limit your comments to three minutes. This time, I'll now open the citizen comment period. Please note that the commission is interested in hearing your comments, and that staff has done their best to make public comment possible during this challenging time. And I would ask that if your comments have been previously stated that you were trying to reiterate that same comment. Mr. Schleiden, do we have anybody physically present?
No, sir.
We will now welcome comments from the public by electronic means. It is important to note that this is a live recorded meeting, and all comments will be taken under consideration by the commission. Citizens participating by phone will be allowed to speak. Moderator and commission can only see your phone number on your screen, so the moderator will go down the list of numbers and unmute each line one at a time. Prior to unmuting a line, the moderator will announce the last three numbers of your phone number. You will then hear a recording indicating that your phones is now unmuted. At this point, you can indicate whether or not you wish to comment, stating yes, you'll be asked to state your name and magisterial district for the record. Are there any Zoom verbal Zooms?
Uh, there are no, sir, there are no, there are no attendees, and there are no question and answers or hands raised, so there are no citizen comments.
Okay, so phone or otherwise, so we'll just skip down through there with no further comments, then the citizen comment period is now closed. We'll now go to the approval of the September 9th, 2020 meeting minutes. I know there, we'll turn to end this up to, to Brandy. Minor changes.
Okay, so if, if there are no more, we could approve with the minor changes, or make a motion, I'm sorry, approve.
I'm making a motion to, I would make a motion to change, to approve the minutes with the minor changes that we addressed with Brandy.
Okay.
I will have a motion second, motion second. All in favor? Okay, it's, motion carries, and we will move on to number four, Board Supervisor report, report.
All right, at their September 28th, 2020, meeting, the Board of Supervisors approved the James River Depot, Orson Campground, and the relocation of the RYT LLC automobile holding yard per the Planning Commission's recommendation. The TCO board in your report, I put, the TCO board did not meet in September. While that is true, we did meet in October, a week ago, October 7th, and approved the exterior changes to the holding yard and the proposed canopy. The improvements are being made to reopen the former Ferguson's Grocery located 4811 South Lee Highway. The only outstanding issue on that particular project per the exterior improvements is the freestanding sign. We're still working on the location and overall height of the freestanding sign. They're doing some surveying work to try to get some precise measurements to see where the sign can go. But they did approve the canopy and, and, and the canopy, the gas pumps, some, some other signage associated with the building. Again, the only one is the freestanding gas pipe sign. The Board of Zoning Appeals did not meet in September.
Any questions? Okay, now, we'll now proceed to the scheduled public hearings. We will follow the same process that we did in the citizen comment period. Any citizens present will be allowed to speak. Staff will read any written comments he's received, and we will then take comments by way of Zoom webinar, and finally, we will take comments by way of district. So are there any citizens?
We will do, we will do it.
We'll do that.
Yes.
Okay, so now we'll just go ahead and move on into number five.
Yes, sir, and I was just, I was, I just shared my screen, and so you can see it via Zoom. The first public hearing is one of two parts for Hevner's Mobile Home Park LLC. The first one is an application for conditional rezoning from the general business, general residential R1 District to the general business B1 District in order to develop a self-storage business. So this is a public hearing, the conditional rezoning from R1 to B1 District. Ms. Patty Lemon, a managing member, the managing member of Hevner's Mobile Home Park LLC, has submitted a application for the conditional rezoning. The purpose of the conditional rezoning is to develop a self-storage business. The property consists of 5.00 acres and is located on the west side of Long Hollow Road. The map depicts the, the area outlined in orange, the five acre parcel outlined in orange. Again, five acres on the nose, west side of Long Hollow Road, Route 631, approximately .44 miles from the intersection of Long Hollow Road and Middle Road. Middle Road is 704, and identified as 799 Long Hollow Road, Geneva Vista, Virginia 24416. While the original application that's in your package was dated May 27th, 2020, the review and these public hearings were postponed by agreement. The postponement was in order for the applicant to develop a site plan for the proposed improvements. The original proffer statement states that the property will be in development in accordance with an older site plan that has since been revised. This, this week, and I've given this to you previously on the, before the meeting, we have a new proffer statement that is, that is dated October 12th, 2020, again, signed by Patty, Ms. Patty Lemon, the managing member of Mobile Home, Hevner's Mobile Home Park, and the two conditions that they have proffered is, one, to utilize the subject property for a storage business per Section 605.03-12 of the County of Rockbridge Land Development Regulations, and number two, to utilize the subject property for one or two family dwellings per Section 605.02-4 of the County of Rockbridge Land Development Regulations. So there is an existing house, as you can see on the lower, the southernmost corner of the property, there is existing single-family house at 799 Long Hollow Road. It should be pointed out, when the, when the Section 605.02-4 calls for the, the project to be, the property be utilized for one or two family dwellings, that actually means one single-family dwelling, or I should say, a single-family dwelling, single-family dwellings or duplexes. And that's what it means by one family dwelling is a single-family dwelling, two-family dwelling is a duplex. And so she has an existing single-family dwelling on the property, but the underlying, the, the original zoning R1 would allow for both of those, depending on the, the well and septic and, you know, health department approvals, that type of thing. So, so this is a public hearing. In attendance tonight, we have Mr. Steve Dowdy with Green Forest Surveys, and, and the, really what we're thinking about doing is, is going through the public hearing process for this, and then have Steve contingent on the approval, recommendation of approval of the conditional rezoning, have Mr. Dowdy come up and talk about the storage units during the special exception public hearing that is held after this one.
Okay, well, is there anybody physically present who would like to speak? Anybody? And then we'll take, are there any Zoom, Zoom verbal or Zoom texts or phones?
There are no, we do have one attendee, but we do not have any hands raised. There's no phone numbers. Let's give it a few minutes or a few seconds. We do not have any questions and answers and no hands raised. So no, sir, there's no, there's no one physically present to speak during the public hearing, and there are no attendees that wish to speak.
Okay, so if there are no other comments, then the public hearing for this section will be closed. And we'll just need to go through the, if there, was the Hevner Mobile Home Public Hearing application.
Yes, just discussion with the planning commission. Again, Mr. Dowdy is here to answer any questions pertaining to the rezoning, but, but the phone was.
We need to go through the rezoning first.
Yes, yes.
Is there any, anybody having problems with that rezoning? It is contiguous to, on the B1.
Just a question, the property to the north, 857, is that, is it, is this all with the Hevner zone? Basically, the, the two parcels to the south and then the side acre tract?
Let me, let me go to here. So the Hevner zone, I'm gonna zoom up a little bit. Yes, the Hevner zone, these two tracks that are conditionally zoned identified as 6767, and then the car lot itself is 785, and then they do own 799, and that is the limits of their, their holdings in this area. And again, this would be a conditional rezoning based on the proffers that Ms. Lemon, the managing member of the LLC, has submitted.
Robert, do you have any questions?
No, I'm, I'm, I don't want any questions. Thank you.
I'll make a motion, make a motion to the planning commission recommend the conditional rezoning of a five acre parcel of land located on the west side of Long Hollow Road, identified as tax map number 77131B3, owned by Hevner's Mobile Home Park LLC, from residential to general district R1 to general business district B1, with acceptance of the proper conditions be approved.
One second.
One second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, motion carries. And we'll move on to the second part of the project.
Yes, and just for, just for the record, of course, this is, this is the second public hearing on the same property. Again, Ms. Patty Lemon, managing member of Hevner's Home Mobile Home Park LLC, has submitted an application for a special exception to develop a storage business per Section 605.03-12 of the County of Rockbridge Land Development Regulations. The property consists of five acres. We've reviewed the location on the last side, on the last thing. The plans include two buildings that I'll let Mr. Dowdy review after this presentation. For discussion purposes, staff has included draft conditions for the proposed storage business. The two draft conditions that we, we have in the package is substantial compliance with site plan titled Hevner's Mini Storage, prepared by Civil Consulting Group PC, dated September 21st, 2020, and including continued maintenance of landscaping in a present, presentable condition. That is the site plan that is in your package, of course, with that particular date. Number two, draft condition is approval contingent upon VDOT Building Department and Erosion Settlement Control/Stormwater Management approvals. With that, I'd like to turn the meeting over to Mr. Steve Dowdy with Green Forest Surveys to review some, some additional details of the, of the project. And with that, I'm still gonna share my screen, but I would like to bring up, I'm still sharing my screen, but for discussion purposes, if, if needed, and I can find it, I'll, I'll bring up the site plan, but it's, it's the same site plan that's, of course, in your package.
Thank you, Chris. Thank everybody on the commission for your time. There's not a lot to say, but two or three things. One, I'm Steve Dowdy. I'm with Green Forest Surveys. We're out of the big city of Geneva Vista. Normally, it would be the engineer here, engineer from Civil Consultants is Hunter Young. Hunter is quarantined for, for, he tested positive a week or so ago. So therefore, I'm here to present his site plan. So you know something about Hunter. He, for the past few years, he's done the engineering for the Horse Center. He also has done engineering for the City of Lexington, City of Geneva Vista, and Southern Virginia. He is Southern Virginia University. He's, he's acquainted with everybody in the area as far as getting plans approved and what's necessary. So it's not a stranger that came in here. Just want to make sure that everybody is aware of that. The site is small, got two buildings on it. Both buildings are 20 foot deep. Total of about 600 square feet. Possibility of up to 122 storage units. I say up to because I'm certain that some of the units will be combined to make larger storage units. So, so maximum use would be 122. Space between the buildings is a little larger than normal to allow friendly in and out. Drainage is not a particular issue. On the hill above the, the unit.
I can put contours on.
The, the, this property right here is a brownfield. I'm, I'm okay. It's a brownfield, so there, there will not be, when I say brownfield, under the, under the abatement, federal abatement program. So there will not be anticipated further development on the hill above it. It will be what it is for a long time. So it's, everything that's being proposed is on the side of the property that is away from the road and across this existing stream. It is well screened from the street because the existing dream, stream has matured growth on its banks and within it. It will not, my opinion, it will not be disruptive to the neighborhood, low traffic, low visual impact. And I'm here to address whatever questions you have. Otherwise, I'll talk forever.
For discussion purposes, I will go ahead and ask, but for discussion purpose, I'm gonna pull up the site plan and share that as well. But go ahead. So I'll take that second to do.
The, in, in the package that we got, it's, it's hard to read these filed on anyway, classes. What kind of vegetation is to the, to the north next to the?
That would be the right-hand side.
The right-hand side, 857 next to the.
Leland Cypress.
That Leland Cypress.
Four County approved.
Yes, and so with that, let me, let me share my screen, or no, I am sharing my screen. I apologize. I didn't mean to. I pulled it up via email. So yes, that's one thing we talked about with Mr. Young and Mr. Dowdy, is, is there, they are removing some of these trees along the drainage area towards Long Hollow Road. But you do see there's a new tree line. It states here, and so these trees will be preserved. The actual drainage is, is long here. If you can follow my, my hand coming across here, that's the actual drainage. There will be trees on the north side and the south side of the drainage ditch that will be preserved. And then there is a new planting, a substantial new planting of, of Leland Cypress along that, that side towards the existing house I think you referred to.
And this, of course, is also a public hearing.
All right, we'll go ahead and then, thank you, and we'll go ahead with the public hearing.
I would like to comment that the planning department, and Chris in particular, have been extremely helpful and friendly. It's nice to appear before a planning commission and a planning department that, that isn't anti-everything. It feels good, and I'm certain that nine months ago, none of us thought we were going to become experts at Zoom and YouTube and everything else. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, we'll now open this up to the public hearing. There is no one present here, so we'll move on to. There is no one present here, so we'll move on to Zoom verbiage and text and phone. Are there any, anything showing on the board?
No, but for the, I was not sharing the screen, but while I do that, while, while we have a continued discussion, there's no one physically present here to speak. There are no hands raised, and there are no questions and answers. But with that, it somewhat confuses me because we could see it here, but I was not sharing my screen for, for, for the record and YouTube and everybody else. Let me share this portion of the screen. So now it is actually shared via YouTube and Zoom for the, for the general public that's not in attendance to see. And of course, the, the, just review, this is Long Hollow Road. This along here was the drainage ditch that I was referring to. This along here was the drainage ditch I was referring to. There is a new tree line that will be preserved on the north and south side of the creek in between the road. And then, of course, the Leland Cypress is that, that we were discussing are along the east side there. So apologize, I was not, it would, we could see it, but the, the exterior, the, the people that joined us Zoom and or YouTube could not see that. So with that being said, I will stop sharing and go back. There's one attendee, but there is no hands raised, and we do not have any questions and answers. So I'll turn it back to the chair.
Seeing that there are no comments, we'll go ahead and close the public hearing at this point, bring it back to the commission for discussion.
There, there is exterior lighting. Steve and I actually talked about it at the beginning of the week. Most likely, they will be achieved by wall packs, but we've assured, we've discussed anyway that they're fully shielded and compliant with the Land Development Regulations. Because that is, that has been an issue on, on some, some other storage units in the county. So yes, sir, we, we have addressed that. I will say, Ms. Huffman, of course, has prepared different motions, different available motions you'll have. If you, if you are leaning towards making a recommendation of approval, we do have the draft conditions that are included in your package on page two of the memo. If, if we are gonna, if we are going to make a motion to approval, staff would recommend the substantial compliance and then approval contingent upon. That's again on page two of the memo towards the beginning of the package.
I pulled, while I'm sitting here, I pulled MapQuest up and looked at a satellite view of this property. And I, I know that they're showing some existing tree, trees and tree line along that the creek area. But I don't know if that's gonna be substantial to shield that property from the road and maybe from the neighbors that live across the road. Three hundred and sixty five days a year, if it's not all, and it, it appears not to be all some type of evergreen tree. It's, it's some trees that are gonna lose leaves in the fall. So I wonder if there shouldn't be some landscaping along the front side of that thing to kind of shield the neighbors that live actually across the road, because it will be something that they've gotta, they're gonna have to look at the rest of their lives, so.
Um, that's, that's something that, and then you're correct, it's, it is a different zoning category. Some of it is, and I'm actually going to, sorry, I'm looking at it, but I'm not sharing. So with that being said, let me share my. This is sharing my screen, and you could see it on, on YouTube and then the Zoom participants. So this is the area we're talking about. There, there are some staggered, some, some staggered evergreens in that area, and you're correct, during the, the winter months is certainly not as good a buffer as during the, during the, the spring and summer. But with that being said, when we were on site earlier, we did feel like it was, it was a substantial buffer, and, and it's not, it's unusual when we do buffer it towards the road itself. We can, depending on the planning commission's direction, we can, we can look at that and, and make this recommendation approval supplement to, to some supplemental landscaping to be along that, that creek bed. And of course, where, where we're talking about, this is existing entrance here over, there's existing culvert that will be, but be unchanged. The road itself will get wider, but once you get over this one, of course, the turn road is through here. This is the substantial evergreen buffer, the, the, the evergreen Leland Cypress is as shown. Storage unit number one here, I think it's a twenty four foot parking aisle, then storage unit number two here. And so, so if y'all had the opportunity to, out of other planning commission members had the opportunity to view the site and have any comments on those existing trees that, that are, that are there.
The only reason it brings concern to me is we're going from a, from a residential to a business zoning, and it's a ton of residential and homes, private homes across the road and around that. So to me, there should be a, some buffer or more permanent buffer year round as far as vegetative plantings along a creek bed in addition to what's there and kept up just to minimize the, the, the visual side of it from, from the private homes across Long Hollow Road. That's my opinion. So. It could and may negatively affect their property values if somebody's got, they try to sell and come in and look across the road as a storage unit. I don't have a problem with it other than that.
I, I tend to agree with Robert on that, that, looking at that. That little space, Chris, right there between the orange line, the property boundary along Long Hollow Road and that, that area there, is there, what? Is that, is that the buffer in there?
Well, the, the proposed is actually to, to reduce the tree, slightly reduce, and that's shown on the site plan, reduce the, this, this area to allow for parking accommodate or to allow for travel accommodations. There's nothing proposed, additional plantings on this side. So if the, if the planning commission wishes, we can recommend approval of the two, two conditions that staff has drafted prior to the meeting, and then have a third one, additional screening along Long Hollow Road to further buffer the proposed huge storage units from the residential dwellings along Long Hollow Road. That, that's one, that's one potential as, as far as a draft condition. Well, we'd have to look into it, you know, of course, you, you can't plant, you're not gonna plant Leland Cypress is in the right of way. There's also, you know, there's also, you cannot impede the site distance would be another concern, just right off the, right off the cuff. But at the same time, there may be, without going out there and looking at it prior to the meeting, I can't really, I can't, I can't fully answer that question. But it could be a recommendation moving forward to the board of supervisors as far as that number, draft condition number three, additional screening along Long Hollow Road to further buffer the proposed units from the residential dwellings across Long Hollow Road. I will say this, we, we, of course, sent certified mail to all the members that were talking, all three of these houses for sure. Certified mail from there posted the property with the rezoning pending and done ads and newspaper, and we have not heard, we have not heard anything from, from the residents. That's, you know, that, that doesn't mean that they, they would not have concerns afterwards. I've just, you know, as, as with both public hearings, we sent out certified mail to all the direct land adjourners, including across the roads, what I'd like to say.
And the tree, and the tree buffer in there, to me, is the right way to go, then you're protecting those folks even though they're not here. Even though they're not voicing their opinion now, I think. I think that's something that we should do.
I think that would be a good recommendation.
So Chris, would it be something that would be considered, we could put it as a, as a recommendation there, but it would be, would be something that was considered after the fact, because, you know, like, you don't, we don't truly know how much of the tree line they're gonna, they're gonna remove.
Well, when I.
I feel like if you had, I rode by there, I didn't go into the property, you know, but, you know, coming from, drive it up and turn around and back down and go back, just how I'm looking, I'm without approaching the property and stuff. It seemed like, like, I'm like you, it seemed like it was, you know, pretty well shielded, but, you know, they, if you're, you're saying they're gonna go and then remove some of that, then, you know, it gives me reasons to be alarmed, but also it just depends on how much they remove. Because I hate to put more, I just look at the, you know, Long Hollow Road, it happens to the flood, and then you've got storage units, and, and I don't know what the elevation to that area is gonna be. If you put more things to increase the water or anything else that comes down through there than it redirects water.
Sure, no, that's a, that's an excellent question, and I will, would start off by saying, you know, it's not in a flood zone. There's no associated flood zone with the drainage, drainage area through, through this area. With that being said, I really would like, my suggestion, if you are gonna do, it, it's a recommendation to the board of supervisors, obviously, with that, with additional screening, I probably would like to get with the, with Mr. Doughty to, to look at it on site prior to the board of supervisors meeting. If, if we are going towards a motion to approve, look at it with the, with the surveying and the engineer and see what trees are gonna be removed and then, and then have a better, be better educated on, on what we're actually talking.
I might get rest of the board, I'm, I'm confident that the, the buildings and things like that in, in the Cypress up here. But in the area there towards the front, it's questionable, I feel like I rode by there, but when you start saying it, you know, how much of it's gonna be removed? And if we didn't get an answer on that, that would be better. Then that would be able to find out a good recommendation of, okay, they're really gonna take out more trees, we assume, so let's just put something back there, but maybe on this end, the state, you know.
We can, we can go in and go up and, and we're, what we wanna add to it as a, as a, a solid buffer of either existing evergreen trees or Leland Cypress, Cypress plantings to screen the front of the bill, buildings. And then that, that'll give the, the Hevners and, and the ability to leave some trees and then plant some other ones to fill it in.
I don't think it would be. Chris, if you were saying we have to go on this side of the, of the.
There are other, there are other species.
And I will say, I, I, I will say it's unusual to buffer the front of the building. You know, with, with that being said, it is residential on the, on the, on the other side. But I'm, I'd actually like to get some, some time to look at the actual ordinance. Bear with it, I'm not sharing this, but, but let me, let me look at the actual ordinance real quick and see what it calls for. All right, so, and it's probably worthwhile, I'm gonna read this verbatim. It says, number two, buffer areas shall be provided at the outer boundaries of the lot except for locations where the driveways, parking lots, utility easements and other openings are required. Where buffer areas required, evergreens or deciduous trees the size of canopy approved by a planning commission shall be employed for screening purposes. So. So it goes on to say, number five is all outdoor storage and loading areas shall be buffered from public view. I think that, that's outdoor storage, that does not, public streets, excuse me, from, scan from all public streets and adjacent residential properties. This goes into the, the, the things we said about transportation site distance, that type of thing.
I'd like to see some sort of recommendation for additional buffers that are not gonna be. Visual, and I feel like there's enough, enough property in there that will allow for that.
So, so I think it's really gonna come down to what's on ground, the, the distance we have, because again, again, we have some, some turning lanes and some travel ways on that side. I'd really have to explore the ordinance itself, but, but if we do, you know, if we, it's always problematic to try to come up with conditions or, you know, these types of questions at the meeting. But, you know, if, if y'all would like, we can do additional, what I have so far, I'll, I'll say that. Number three, additional screening along Long Ho, Hollow Road to further buffer the proposed units from the residential dwellings across Long Hollow Road. That's, yeah, see. No, no, it's not, it, um. I would really like to determine it prior to the board of supervisors, telling truth, and, and then have a, have a, like, somewhat of a revised plan. But that could certainly be, that could certainly be done, you know, in conjunction. See, you have any comments or you think that's achievable as far as meeting and?
If it is all achievable, I think there's been some comments that some of those trees would be removed. I don't think there's any intent to remove any of those trees that exist in, in and beside the stream between Long Hollow Road and the proposed building. All the pre-removable is to, is between, being to be, to the property that is eight eighty, eight sixty seven on that. And it's, it's gonna be replaced. There's gonna be a large buffer put there.
I, I assume that this is, this facility is gonna be open twenty four hours a day to anybody who wants to come in and, and either pick up something or bring something in, correct?
That is, generally speaking, that is correct, yes.
Okay, I come around the north, the, well, the north side of that building where they've got Leland Cypress planted now, I come around, I hit my headlights towards Long Hollow Road, and I'm gonna be pointing it right straight into that eight thirty, whatever it is, it's hitting block there now, hang on. But, and the eight twenty two and eight thirty, um, Long Hollow Road can have headlights shining right into the, into their homes from that property, if there's not proper screen in there at night at two o'clock anymore.
Yeah, no, we're, I'm definitely tracking your concerns. It's, it's how the, it's, it's how we want to address it in a condition and, and what the best way to proceed is, is what we're trying to figure out, I think.
Okay, that's fine.
I think if we're addressing, I think we put these concerns into motion, and then board supervisors can revise that.
Absolutely. The, the board, of course, as always, has, has the authority to, to accept some of these conditions, modify these conditions or remove all conditions. So, you know, I, I think it, I think it, I think we're, I think there's good comments, good discussion. And, and, you know, with the, we know the intent of it, we obviously, staff knows the intent. And so, again, with that additional screening along, along Hollow Road to further buffer the proposed utility, the proposed storage units from the residential along Long Hollow. And, and if, if y'all are willing to, to put that condition in there, that would allow for, for, for staff to meet with the applicant to, to, to say, what does it look like now? And what's it gonna look like in December is, is really the, the, the concern, and it's certainly, I, I understand that concern.
Yeah, I mean, and I don't wanna put this off too much, but I guess I think we can address that. Are there any other, other concerns? For discussion? Hey, I'm, I would recommend in the motion that we add that third.
So how do you want us to pay that, Chris?
I could, if y'all would like to, if y'all would like to make the motion, that Ms. Huffman has prepared with the one, it'll be the third one down. is prepared with the one, it's, it'll be the third one down, with the proposed conditions, I can then read the proposed conditions, Al, as I have them drafted.
Okay, so I make a motion, the planning commissioner recommends to board supervisors that the special exception permit for the mobile home park LLC to develop a storage business per LBR section six oh five, oh three dash twelve, to be approved with the proposed conditions or with the proposed conditions amended as follows.
So number one would be substantial and compliance with the site plan titled Heaveners Mini Storage Prepared by Civil Consultants Group PC dated September first, 2020, including the continued maintenance of landscaping in a presentable condition. Number two is approval contingent upon B dot Building Department Erosion Settlement Control and Stormwater Management approvals. Number three is additional screening along Long Hollow Road to further buffer the proposed units from the residential dwellings along, along Long Hollow Road.
Right, you have a motion? I'll say it. Uh, call for the votes, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, motion carries.
Thank you, Ms. Valley, thank you for following. Yes, sir.
Coming in and you're patient with all of us. Okay, um, did we ever, did we, we did close the public hearing, did we?
Yes. Thanks, David.
Okay, now we will review the project for the next public hearing, the application zoning tax amendments pertaining to the golf courses and country clubs in general, presidential R1 difference.
Uh, yes, so at the September ninth, 2020 meeting, the planning commission instructed staff to advertise for a public hearing the draft language pertaining to golf courses and country clubs as used as by special exception in the residential zoning district. And so for, in your package, you had the draft language as it was written last month. Again, in your staff report, the staff would like to discuss possible modifications to the language of the current draft, including the possibility of removing the requirement for country clubs to be operated as a nonprofit. So what I have passed out for you, and I'll stop sharing this real quick, and I'm going to share a different document, bear with me here. And this is for. All right, so, so the proposed amendments, I'd just like to start from the top. There is some, some slight modifications, what I, what I would consider slight modifications, comparatively speaking, what was in the package. There is some, some modifications to the statement intent. You can see that, and of course. Uh, the current sentence says, the regulations for this district are designed to stabilize and protect essential characteristics of the district and promote and encourage a suitable environment for residents. And the, again, the current language says, and to prohibit all activities of a commercial nature. We've talked about that in the past, that's actually problematic. On, on some sections, we, we allow for continued care of retirement communities. Uh, we allow for, for some, going through the process or going through here, bed and breakfast home stays, nursing homes, continued care retirement communities, private schools, that type of thing. So that could be construed as problematic when your statement of intent says to prohibit all activities of commercial nature. So our first recommendation that, that staff has is to change, strike out prohibit all, and, and state to limit activities of a commercial nature. The second sentence that we would like, that we are recommending to add is the uses related to the non-residential development should be designed to increase the vitality and attractiveness of this district as a living environment. And that just goes on to say what the purpose of these commercial natures is, you know, as far as, as far as the, to, to, to boost up the district itself. Then we add in the, in the general district statement intent, we actually, we of course add golf courses and country clubs as, as a certain additional uses that, that would be accepted. And, and so that's a direct result of the next program, or the next ones I'd like to talk about. We have permitted uses, those are unchanged, the, the permitted uses are still the same, the special exceptions. Uh, we are proposing to add two special exceptions, and that would be six oh four point oh three dash seven golf courses as currently defined in the Rockridge County Land Development Ordinance or Land Development Regulations, and then country clubs. Uh, that would be a used by special exception per section six oh four point oh three dash eight. So going to the modifications that have, that we have come up with, uh, prior to, and I'm actually going to unzoom this so you can see the entire thing. Uh, the discussion or the, the proposed amendments that we would like to discuss tonight is, is one thing that we, we alluded to in the, in the, or stated in the staff report is the nonprofit, the requirement of the nonprofit. It, it, it's our opinion that regardless if it's a nonprofit or a for-profit, it's going to be the exact same use. It's going to be a country club with, with, that has to include a clubhouse, and it may include driving ranges, picnic areas, associated buildings such as maintenance. So with that being said, I'll, I'll go ahead and read the proposed, the proposed language is a membership against striking the requirement of a nonprofit. So it would state, a membership organization formed for recreational purposes which must include a clubhouse and golf course, comma, and may include driving ranges, practice areas, associated buildings such as maintenance buildings, and golf car storage buildings. The facility may include other recreational activities such as swimming pools, tennis courts, and squash courts. Dining facilities, meeting rooms, lodges, and retail sales may also be permitted as accessory uses. The facility may offer associated short-term rentals for patrons of the club. And then the other proposal, the other modification that we'd like to talk about tonight is striking the original language of the short-term rentals are limited to their requirements for density, minimum lot size are, and are limited to the type of dwelling allowed in the underlying district. While we struck that particular sentence, the last sentence of the draft language, it's our recommendation to add the following, the arrangement of residential units to be developed is to be developed in such a manner so that if the lot or parcel of land is ever subdivided, no substandard lots are created in terms of road standards and area and setback requirements for that zoning district. Short-term rentals are limited to the type of dwelling allowed in the underlying zoning district. So really, if the intent and the merit are the exact same in both of those, what we've done is, is during the development phase, it was what our discussion generated as, let's say they don't want to subdivide at the very beginning, they want to do a cluster subdivision, or they want to do a cluster development with, with some sort of amenity in the middle and then houses around it. Um, you know, what happens if and when they want to dispose of that portion of it? And they want to just say, hey, we're going to sell these single family dwellings. Then it's problematic because we're setting us up, you know, you're setting it up without this language that, that again, if the arrangement of residential development shall be in such a manner that the lot or parcel of land is ever subdivided, one, no substandards are, are created, and then the road standards would have to be met. So that would have to be taken into consideration during the design that you can meet the road standard for a cluster subdivision, the area and setback requirements for the district, those three things would have to be considered during the original development phase. So we're not trying to consider those when and if they ever disposed of the property. The third thing is the short-term rentals, that was, that was in the original definition, uh, short-term rentals are limited to the type of dwelling allowed in the underlying zoning district. So that, in a residential zone, like we're talking about, that could be single family dwellings or two-family dwellings. Again, single-family dwellings being a single-family dwelling and two families being a duplex. So those both would be permissible in the residential zoning district.
Okay, and that would not allow.
That would not allow for a multi-family. Now, now, in a residential zoning district, now, if you, if we did a zoning tax amendment to allow country clubs and golf courses in, as a special exception in a residential, a planned residential R2, that's where you could get your, that's where you could get your multi-family. Certainly, some building length, the height limitations, but you could get multi-family. But as proposed now, again, these are, these are all just, these are proposed amendments, tax amendments in the residential zoning districts. So the only two uses are single-family dwellings and two-family dwellings. And that's just our one. And that's the only thing that, that we're, that we're having a public hearing tonight. Of course, if we wanted to allow for country clubs or, or country clubs in an agricultural zone, we would hold another public hearing going through the same process. With that being said, the same definition would apply as a country club in the agricultural zone. Of course, single-family dwellings are only permitted in a, in an agricultural zone currently.
Uh, Chris, I got a question.
Yes, sir.
Hit, scroll back up to the first part of the page where we got limit act from prohibit all to limit activities.
Yes.
We, we're prohibiting activities of commercial nature now in R1, the way it's read. And when it says limited, limit activities, how far does that open up what can be done as far as commercial use or commercial nature in R1? Is that, I mean, who dictates?
That would be through the zoning tax amendment. So, so again, I think it's actually somewhat problematic, in my opinion, it's problematic that the statement intent has to prohibit all activities of commercial nature, because really, uh, the, the, the permitted uses are all of the single-family dwellings, two-family dwellings, a public school, churches, cemeteries, parks, a playground, parks, approved subdivision, home occupation could certainly be a, be, be defined as a, as, could be defined as a commercial nature. Uh, and then, uh, let's see, the other ones that I gave before are bed and breakfast home stays, nursing homes, continuing care retirement communities are all permitted uses, or excuse me, are all special exceptions. Private schools are a special exception as written. And so to answer your question directly, the permitted uses and the uses by special exception would be the limitations of what commercial activities we're talking about.
Okay, I just, from prohibit all to limit, kind of opened it up some, which it looked, as you're explaining it, it makes better sense to have a limit than prohibit all, because we're actually allowing some of those activities now by special exception.
Yes, and I, then that relates to the very next proposed amendment, uses of non-residential development should be designed to increase the vitality and attractiveness of this district as a living environment. So, so they would bring, they would bring something to the table, which I think in, in this case, certainly, uh, country clubs do, you know, the, the, of course, we've said it all along, you know, propelling this forward is some potential improvements to the, to the Lexington Golf and Country Club. And with that being said, you know, they definitely, the, the residential development that surrounds the Lexington Country Club and the Lexington Development Club definitely piggyback off each other. Uh, and, and the successes of one is, 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 could be the success, the success of the other.
That's the only question I had of it, that everything looks good. Thank you.
And this is a public hearing.
Yeah, we will now open this up to public hearing at this time, is there anybody physically present?
There is no one physically present except for us. Uh, we do have one attendee, uh, but his hand is not raised, and let me check the question. We have no check, uh, question and answers, and we do not have any chats going. Uh, with that, I'll turn it up back over. Sure, give, give a few, few seconds. And, and the gentleman with, that is on the Zoom meeting is, is with the news gazette, and so I believe his, his interest is, is covering the stories itself. But with that being said, we'll give a few minutes, just make sure. All right.
All right, I think we can go ahead and close the public hearing at this time, since we have no comments, and then we'll now move on to electronic meeting policy for the planning commission.
Well, on this one, sorry, uh, we need, we close the public hearing, and if you, if you, if the planning commission.
Is, is willing, we would need a recommendation to approve, uh, a motion to approve to the board. I hear you, yes, sir.
I think we covered it, I'm, I'm going to make a motion. I make a motion that the planning commission recommended to the board of supervisors that the proposed tax amendments to LER section six oh four point oh three, uses by special exception in the residential general R1 zoning district pertaining to golf courses and country clubs as uses by special exception be approved.
You have a motion? Second?
Second.
Do we have a second? All in favor?
Aye.
All on the motion carries. And, Chris, I know you will agonize over the worry of this a lot, and I appreciate all the work that you all gave to do on that.
Thank you. Uh, really, our goal is, is to make something work, you know, the first time, obviously, and, and sort of have some futuristic thinking of where this thing could go and, and then be covered with that as well. So, so we, we look forward to it. Again, this does not change anything, it does not change the status of the Lexington Golf and Country Club, but it does give them the ability, if and when they choose to, to make a special exception. Uh, with, with those conversations, I, I would, if all goes well, I would expect a special exception, you know, application for, for some of these uses or all of the uses in somewhat near future. But, but again, that's on their pipeline.
All right, now, now can we move on to number eight?
Yes. Uh, at the September ninth, 2020 meeting, the, the, the commission asked staff to develop and present the electronic meeting policy for the planning commission, uh, for the October fourteenth, 2020 meeting. As discussed, this is, this policy, this policy being the electronic meeting policy is separate from the continuation, continuum of government ordinance that we are currently working under. The electronic meeting policy requires a quorum of the public body to be present at the meeting, but would allow, under certain requirements, other planning commission members to propose, to participate remotely. Ms. Huffman, the county attorney, has prepared the policy and resolutions, uh, and resolution for the commission's consideration. Both of those documents were in your package. And we do need to, if they want to adopt this, it would be by motion as well?
Motion to adopt, uh, resolution.
Motion to adopt resolution, if y'all, if y'all choose.
I like this because it gives us a little more flexibility if somebody can't be here for some reason.
Yes, and, and we've talked about this for, for probably a year or two, if not longer. Uh, fairly recent, the board of supervisors, maybe two years ago, I can't remember exactly, but the board adopted a similar one, and so, so we're piggybacking off that electronic meeting policy.
Doesn't allow us to do, we have that forum.
Yes.
Like we're doing tonight.
It, it could work this way, yes, sir.
Okay. I didn't see anything in there that I have. Any questions about? Does anybody have any? Yeah, this is very similar with the board supervisors.
And it's actually straight out of state code for the most part. Tracks the language that enabled legislation.
Okay. I thought you'd written this all by yourself.
Well, I sort of did, but I converted it to policy language from statutory language.
It sounds finally a motion, motion to adopt the electronic meeting policy.
Do you have a motion?
Second.
All for the question, uh, all in favor?
Aye.
With no names, so motion carries.
All right, appreciate that. Uh, the last thing we have on the agenda is, is a, I'm a broken record here, and I apologize on that in advance, but we have a zoning tax amendment, continue discussion on additional dwellings on a single lot. I, we, staff has not had an opportunity to, to develop this, this will be the last time, I tell you that. So what I'd like to do is continue this discussion, but then also add another one. Obviously, we got through the very, when we brought up this discussion, we also brought up the, the residential zoning district and country clubs and, and golf courses. So, so obviously, y'all have, y'all have passed that to the board of supervisors with a recommendation approval. And so we, now we, I would like to try to start doing, you know, one or two of these, uh, a month to start talking about it. This has been, become extremely, uh, it, we talk about on daily basis with, with builders and that type of thing. I have some draft language, but, but again, not to be a broken record, just not had the opportunity to fully flush it out and bring it to y'all's level. This will be the last time I say that, and I, I will, I will do my best to bring some draft language, include draft language in your package next month on the additional dwellings on a single lot. And, uh, there's a slew of other tax amendments I think we should work on, and so, so staff will maybe get with the chair, or if y'all have any recommendations on looking through the ordinance, obviously, just feel free to say, hey, what about this one? And, and we can start working at these two at a time. And, and we can start working at these two at a time, and, and hopefully, you know, continue, uh, continue making recommendations to the board of supervisors on the proposed text amendments.
And nobody, everybody knows how busy you and staff are.
I appreciate that, we, we appreciate that, we do.
We appreciate everything you do. Okay, um, so that, we're gonna stick that can on down the road, and that brings us to the end of the meeting. If we have a motion to overturn it, there's no other, no other business to be considered. No other business. Motion?
The commercial commission said.
Okay. Second, alright, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank y'all, thank y'all. Thank you, Robert.
Robert, thank you, stay well, stay, stay safe.
Thank y'all.
I'll be right down.
Thank you, sir.
Well done.
Thank you, thank you, we definitely, thank y'all.